Alrighty, so you've got a, you've got a, you got a quorum? So, we're gonna, we're gonna start, we're gonna start off. And it just, it seems like, you know, the dynamics this year have been such as we sit here and recognize today's the 28th of January, and I'm sitting here saying to myself, Mrs. LaFon's Christmas decorations didn't come down until Sunday. So I'm still at Christmas, and just to kind of give you, put things in perspective for you overall. So tonight, we're, we've got Ronnie up on the highway side, and then followed by engineering, planning, and development services, and Mark, I know Mark did his usual good professional job, recognizing that he took kind of a, he took his piece, and then he kind of took chefs on the fly. So we'll recognize him for that, and for getting that put together. So with that, Ronnie, why don't you kind of just give us, give us kind of a highlight, and talk a little bit about what you got, what you got planned, and what have you.
Okay, 2015, pretty much the same as 2014, is we try to drive inclusion, teamwork, and better communications and trust across the DPW. Still a work in progress, you know, with the consolidation of all the different groups into one area. So, basically, again, this year, I broke the priorities into a few things. Team building, continue to develop synergy between all the groups, cross-training and sharing resources across various departments within DPW, implementing a common vision and mission. We did have a mission statement that we developed at the leadership level. The only problem is, I gotta get the rest of the group to believe that we are still one, and not multiple different groups, and there's still a little bit of resistance to moving in that direction, but we're working on it. Continue to involve employees in the strategies and business decisions of the DPW operations. So, as we start to look at what opportunities we had in 2015, 16, we have invited each one of the different departments within DPW to provide input on projects and activities that they see as individual groups that would help the town to improve either from a reliability standpoint, or maintenance standpoint, to where we're addressing some long-term issues that need to be resolved over time. B is the leadership piece, continued development of leadership succession, and that's working with Tony and Mel Tracy, it was Tony, me, and Rose, working in terms of, you know, resource needs, whether it was shop floor individuals, or as we look at backfilling for, you know, critical positions within DPW. Schedule formal leadership training, we've done that, matter of fact, we've gone outside to EDS, which is our new partner, to get some consultation, we're consulting and consultation on some leadership development. We've also utilized Thermo Fisher, there's a gentleman down there with a background in quality and team building, that has volunteered his time to support us, and we've utilized him several times for small workshops and training sessions, establish goals and performance measures for DPW. And to give you an example of what that looks like, we use the dashboard concept, which is red, yellow, green, and kind of map out each one of our projects, and some of the activities associated with those projects, kind of tracking both, how we're doing from month to month in terms of meeting our projected goals in these particular projects, but basically overall, anything within DPW. The top three measures kind of are the base in which we, we drive the performance. One is productivity, we look at revenue, profits, both from MCC, New York State, and Monroe County, as well as the Penfield School District is revenue streams for us, so we line up work, starting right about now with those particular entities to identify where we're going to be involved during the spring and summer months to pull in revenue. Operational costs, again, looking at our overtime situation, material usage, and any contracted services or contracted labor that we bring in to support us compared to what our budget is, and then HSC, which is the Health Safety Environmental Effectiveness, both for injuries and lost time and near misses, and reasons why we're experiencing those things, and then coming up with solutions to resolve it. So, those are the three major measures that we'll have, and we review monthly with the leadership team, and we score our matrix based on that red, yellow, green. So if it's red, that means we got a problem, and we gotta start to think of corrective actions to get back on either a yellow or a green track. We want to purchase and implement the digital communication system in DPW. Right now, we have all of our plow trucks equipped with digital radios, we're moving to the second phase, which will be the second part of this year's activities to equip both our heavy equipment, our off-road heavy equipment, as well as all our service vehicles with digital radios. So far this year, with the radios that we have in place, working with Monroe Community, Monroe County Emergency Response Group, it's been excellent, frequency is fantastic, we haven't dropped calls, we've got clear communications from the bay down in Rondicoy to the four corners up at 250 and 441. So, we haven't had any communication issues, and it's worked out well for redirecting and positioning guys, especially for snow plowing where we need help, or we want to run in tandem or triple to, to support snow emergencies. So we want to continue with that, continue improvement maintenance program in the drainage culverts, stormwater drainage ponds, that's an ongoing plan. We've identified 10 major projects that we'll be tackling this year in that particular area, and Dennis Sansoda in the team will be driving the completion of that. And as we're doing these programs, we're also going back and making sure that we have a maintenance strategy in place to sustain it over time. We just purchased a large mowing head that we will attach to our new bobcat that we bought last year. That will allow us to continually knock down a lot of the saplings and tall grass along the commissioned ditch in other ponds and culverts. So, we're putting the maintenance plan as well as doing the cleaning part of the process. We've developed a five-year vehicle and equipment strategy, we have a matrix in place that, that's driving that decision-making process, looking at both years of service, cost of repairs, and the, the strategy of utilization in terms of, you know, how often are we going to be using it, the frequency, so forth, so that as we buy equipment, we're buying it to get maximum utilization out of it, rather than just having it sit in the yard. So, we'll continue to drive that process. Safety and attendance management, continue involvement with employees. We do have an employee-based safety committee that meets once a month, and they set the tone for the safety agenda, that the entire DPW group comes together once a month and meet and talk about strictly safety issues, and any safety training opportunities. Under reviews and feedback, part of our appraisal process is to review our attendance and keep guys abreast of any concerns or issues related to attendance or performance. So that's working out well, the foreman's, the foreman in the group are, is basically leading that process in terms of discussions and the write-ups. So, it's driven at that level. The other, continued monthly safety meetings with all DPW employees, and we will continue to do that. For table stakes, continue assessment and review of all contracts managed by DPW. And what we're doing is looking at any situations like Frontier, Time Warner, RG&E, Waste Management, evaluating, are they the best deal out there? And when we see that there's an issue, we will address it and possibly go off for bid or go off for quotes from different suppliers, and so far, it's worked out pretty well. We had Waste Management for a drop-off for a number of years, their prices started to get a little bit higher than we were comfortable with, so we went to Alco, and they were able to supply everything that we need, and they've been very responsive in the last two. So, and the price is way down from what we used to spend. So, we're going to continue to look at those types of contracts and arrangements to make sure that we're maximizing our dollar, and getting the service level that we should be getting for, for those types of activities. Again, sustain our revenue stream with Penfield Schools, New York State, the county, and MCC. MCC has probably about three weeks' worth of work out there this year, in terms of refurbishing two large parking lots, and finishing their administrative building in terms of paving. So, we're probably going to be tied up in that area for a good amount of time.
That is more than you're usually out there.
Yeah, basically, we started the one project a year ago, and we got as far as putting in their entrance to their visitors' area off of the new entrance into MCC, and at that point, they stopped because they were still working on their administrative building. So, they should be finished, I gotta talk to Blaine, but they should be finished with that particular facility, and they want us to come back and top everything, as well as do the two student parking lots on the front side of MCC, so.
And our, and our revenue for 14 roughly was?
Roughly about $300,000 we pulled in from those guys.
And I was just going to ask, is that then projected to be increased then for that MCC project this year?
We're hoping, you know, you know, because really, you know, they can't beat the pricing that we present them with in terms of doing the work, and, you know, they, they don't hesitate at all in terms of loading us up, they love to have us up there all year long, but, you know, we still got our work to do as well.
It's a balance, right?
But it's a good, good revenue stream, good relationship, and it's paying off well. Establish measures monthly, and that's what we did with our dashboard indicator, and continue to explore key opportunities, reduce costs across DPW, and that includes partnering and contracting with various entities that will help us to, number one, offset the fact that we don't have a lot of labor, and, number two, to get us a better pricing in terms of completing jobs. Good example, it's Mott's Lane, we contracted with Ironwood, and what they were able to do for us in terms of providing support, allowed us to finish up some work that we had going at MCC, as well as Jackson Road, but they were able to come in and put the foundation in. We contracted the brick wall replacement, and the initial projection for that job was about $220,000 to do, just from the top of the hill all the way down to 441. We basically did from Five Mile Line Road all the way down to 441, for a little bit, little bit more than $185,000, $190,000. So, it was a good deal with partnering with Ironwood, because they did not require as much labor, and they put some high-skilled individuals on the job that helped the job go along in the slow-mo. So we're going to continue to try to do some of those things where we have the opportunities to partner our guys with, with some of the contractors to do that work.
Another good example is, is we used Ironwood, we partnered with Ironwood and our guys to do the community center, the landscaping and walkways for the community center.
They did all the concrete work, and that worked out real well. You know, we have some specialties, but we don't have a lot of specialties anymore. A lot of the guys have since retired, the newer guys that we have aren't at that skill level yet, and where we can supplement some of those skill levels with some contract folks that specialize in that stuff, makes all the sense in the world.
Stamp concrete, you know, things like that.
Yeah.
It's important to know your limitations for a variety of reasons.
Right, right. Personnel, utilizing existing employees.
I'm going to give you about five more minutes, so as you.
They can wrap it up, and Mark can handle it.
Timekeeper, I don't.
Personnel, we continue to utilize our workforce, again, contracting with some other folks, and only replace as needed, versus wholesale hiring for one-for-one swap-out. Expense and capital, a lot of this stuff is already on the books in terms of what we're going to try to do in 2015, and we're starting to put together a capital plan for 2016 in terms of replacements. Like to stay on track with at least two vehicle replacements, you know, until we get the fleet to a point where we're in pretty decent shape, because there are some old, beat-up units, so. Questions?
No, good.
Thank you.
Good, good job, Ronnie. Ronnie and his team had a great, great year, got a lot of stuff, done a lot of stuff accomplished, and so, great job, Ronnie, thank you.
Thank you.
We continue to get compliments from residents, too.
Do we? Good.
All types of letters, all types of letters.
That's not what we hear at the office.
Well, you're gonna have a mixture, yeah.
You'll have, you'll have, there's that, there's that balance, there's that balance.
Especially this time of year, you know, they're not actually greedy.
My phone calls too much salt, next phone call is not enough salt.
You get it.
Alright, we'll move on to engineer and planning, so why don't you take a stab at whichever one you want to go with first? Do you want to do the, you want to do the, the previous job, or the new job, or some combination thereof? So, go right, go right ahead, sir.
I got engineering on top, so if you want to start with that one?
Yeah.
Kind of picked up what Jeff had tweaked that just a little bit, but that's what the board has today. First and foremost is keeping up with our EPA compliance, this is a big thing, make sure that we are doing our annual inspections, maintaining our stormwater facilities, partnering with DPW to have them go out and do some inspections as they maintain the ponds. We're also partnering with the Stormwater Coalition, that's a big partnership with Monroe County, is to make sure we keep up with the, the six measures of the public outreach, doing the public participation, the illicit discharge detection, inspections of the sites. We do get weekly reports in from the outside developers or contractors, identifying, you know, what's going on on their property, what issues there are with erosion control. We supplement that with our crew, him and them, kind of go out there and, you know, backcheck that, make sure that they're meeting those compliances. There's also requirements of three-year, every three years, inspecting all the outfalls in town. I believe we did about 100 last year, which is about a third of the groups, we need to keep going with that, make sure we, you know, continue with those outfall inspections. And then also continue with outfall mapping of various, you know, we haven't either gotten to, I think we're, we're pretty close on what's been complete, but also every year, obviously with new development, we add additional outfalls to our system, add additional ponds to our system, those need to be, you know, maintained, and also added to our mapping system, so keeping that going. Second item, again, you know, pairing with the DPW, have been attending the drainage meetings with Ronnie and his crew, identifying, you know, major drainage projects for the year. A big one is the Willow Pond Outfall, that'll require a lot of time and attention this year to take a look at that. Barton Le Judice has been subcontracted to do that design, I'll need to sit down with them and get up to speed on, you know, where they are with, with that project. Also coordination with Perrington, as they are at the outfall end of that, meeting with their commissioner, public works, and their engineer, to make sure that, you know, we're coordinating between the two towns on, on how that work happens, and, you know, what needs to go with that. Valley Brook, Valley Stream, this is a project, you know, it's been many years in the works of cleaning out, we've been trying to keep up and get back into cleaning streams, we've done commissioned ditch the last couple of years, have concentrated on that and kind of have that wrapped, so we're kind of, you know, trying to hit some other areas of the town. It's a Valley Brook, Valley Stream, we do have some preliminary designs on that one, need to meet with the neighbors, get our releases together, and then either work with DPW if they can fit it into their schedule, or, you know, again, subcontract with an Ironwood, or some other firms on that. Four Mile Creek, we currently have out some DEC permits to get for that, again, like commissioned ditch, trying to keep up on cleaning of that. Boom for Stilling, not listed in here, is the Finger Lakes, that was one project of cleaning down south of 441, out in the Carter Road area. We started some cleaning there last year, I believe that's on the group's list for this year, is to continue with that all the way to the town line, and make sure that's cleaned and maintained, and I think they said that's, some of the conversations, but it was 1958, that some people remember, and that was the last time that ditch was cleaned, so I think we're.
Who's remembering that?
Not me.
Look at Jim, I'm assuming Jim.
Some of the, I think the farmers in that area.
The Heritage Association's got that one under cover.
With them, so I think they're fighting trees from 1958, which are obviously massive, so we're trying to get on top of those and, you know, keep a general cleaning, commissioned ditch, DPW did a good job last year of keeping that mode, keeping that access open, which I think will help to, you know, reduce the, you know, the cleaning needs going forward with that. Item C, sanitary sewer projects, we just received bid tabs this past Friday, we were reviewing those for the sanitary sewer project, we did seem to get some good numbers in on that, we're going to be scheduling a meeting with the contractor next week, sit down with them, go over that, make sure that, you know, we're happy with the bid, make sure that the numbers are, are good for that, and then, you know, come back with, to the board with a recommendation.
In two weeks, we should have a recommendation to the, to the board, and then if all goes well, we'll do a, we'll do a, an awarding resolution, our second meeting in February. And they'll be essentially ready to start anytime after, you know, mid-March.
Get that started. Annual sidewalk program, we do have both CDBG money, 2014 money was to put sidewalks from Abraham Lincoln Park and Empire Boulevard, connecting down to South Point Cove Apartments, now that we have that connection there, is to, you know, fill that gap in. We do have some other, you know, locations in town, we're looking to do that, and we're actually preparing documents for the 2015 CDBG, I think looking at continuing down Empire Boulevard on the lower end past Basil's, connecting into Ruoff Park down there, and tie all the way to the town line, so that'll be a nice stretch to get that whole, you know, corridor tied in, now that we have, you know, some increased development down there and some residents.
Los Angeles Landing Park.
Thank you.
What is it?
Los Angeles, listen, Los Angeles.
Los Angeles Landing?
Yeah, well, you said Ruoff, you know.
Oh, Ruoff, got it.
Farmer, we have known this.
Old habits hard, habits hard, right, right? So, yeah, good point.
I guess I'm dating myself.
And I mean, and I guess, you know, when I heard you say it, it just, the two are just kind of interchanging in my head, so I didn't.
Tie it together.
Yeah, right.
Transportation projects, we are still pursuing a possibility of transferring Paner Matrail to County DOT, there is some televising of the storm sewer system down there that they want prior to that, so we'll continue to work with the sewer department and their camera system to get those televised, and provide what information the county may need, and pursue that opportunity to possibly hand that off to them, now that it's been rebuilt and it's in good condition. I know that's been a long time coming, we'll look to continue with that. GIS services, we've just changed over, we had an old GIS system that was available to the staff and to the public, currently that public system is not there, we've transferred over to an online system through a web portal. We've been supplementing some within-house staffing, some outside to get that built and get that back up, I think that's been a great use or benefit back to staff to have that up and available, we were missing it in the time that it was down, so we keep supplementing that, and updating plow routes and other things to help other departments. Item G, engineering department will continue to support the town board, ten planning board meetings, transportation committee, watershed committee, and I think back, even transferred to the safety committee, but I believe the safety committee portion is being transferred over to the farm marshal, who part of his, his GIC future. As far as personnel goes, 2015 will be an active year for personnel in the engineering department, we do have the assistant engineer, is planning and retiring in March, April timeframe, and may have some other changes or some retirements to the assistant engineer, the junior engineer as well in that, so we'll look to replace those. Work with Tony and HR to, to, to start getting some new people in, and get them in as soon as possible, so we can have a little bit of overlap and a little bit of knowledge transfer before, you know, we lose those individuals with 30-plus years of experience.
Yeah, and actually, we did receive from Jim Fletcher, his last official day will be April 24th, he will be retiring.
As far as expenses and capital funding, as Ronnie spoke about, we do have some aging vehicles in there, we're hoping for some opportunity to either repurpose some vehicles we may have in the fleet currently, or, you know, replacement of, at least the, we have a 2001 truck that's used for traffic counters, survey equipment, so to have something that can keep those contained, keep those, you know, safe, but, you know, we need some upgrades to some of those facilities for that. I think from there, I can probably jump into planning.
Okay.
Any questions on engineering?
Yeah, thank you, Mark, I mean, Mark, Mark has kind of, you know, hit the ground running, which I would expect nothing, nothing less of, to try to do a quick, you know, one-week soak time from Jeff. The good news is, is that, you know, he, you know, did originally come from the engineering component, and, you know, has done a good job of keeping his finger kind of on the pulse, so, Mark, we, you know, we really appreciate, you know, the board really appreciates your, your ability to jump in and kind of pick up, and, and I'm, you know, plan a, just a very smooth transition. I know our friends from DPW were appreciative of it together this morning, so I think that'll work out pretty well.
I appreciate the opportunity, so, thank you, Board. Jumping into planning, we are wrapping up mixed use, we had a good meeting this afternoon with some of the neighbors out there, talking about that. Staff has been working very hard to pare down the document, it was, when we kind of got done with it before, had a lot of great content, but it was kind of repetitive, a little, we believe unwieldy, we've been kind of boiling that down to the essence of the document, looking to hit send on that, back to the consultant on Friday. Jim did a great job this afternoon of kind of outlining, and we can share that with the board, future steps as we wrap that up, get to the consultant, have a final, hopefully, meeting with the, the committee, get a blessing from them, and then that'll be a document we'll turn back over to the board, and then steps from there, you know, if the board is okay with it, working with the board, having a public hearing, and then, you know, future steps after that, so that'll be a big part of planning for 2014, is carrying that forward, seeing that hopefully implemented, and then implementation after that. Another big item that hopefully is coming to a close is general code, received an email from them that they are looking to get us a compiled document the first week in February, once we get that, distribute that back to all the department heads, make sure everything's in there that we said and wanted to have in there, look at any final tweaks from, from that with them. At the same time as adopting the general code, we'd like to do some updates to the e-pod maps, have been working with the conservation board on updating the woodlots, deep slope e-pods through there, so kind of update those at the same time. As we do that, again, we'd have to have a public hearing, share that with the, you know, the town boards, we've kind of gone along the way, we've shared that with you, but have a public hearing, sharing with the community what those changes are to the code before it ultimately gets adopted to the general E-code online. adopted to the general E-code online.
I'd like to just interrupt. So Mark has kind of been the shepherd through this, you know, and it's kind of like herding the cats because he's relying on input from a lot of different areas and sources and what have you. So contrary to what you might hear out and about, 95% of this effort, at least the coordination effort, has been Mark and not maybe some other things that you hear. So I just want to make sure Mark gets recognized for that.
Thank you. Item C, we spend, staff spends a lot of time dealing with developers, asking questions and then sending them off basically an instruction list on how to make your applications submitals. We've actually just sat down yesterday with Dave Renner, reworking our webpage, trying to keep that current, but also trying to set up some stuff online. More and more engineering firms are savvy to going online, downloading the application forms, downloading the packet. So we have some of the stuff up there. It's kind of in pieces and parts. It's not as organized as it should be. So it's one of our priorities, jumping right into 2015, is to have that all online. You can go online, say I'm doing a site plan, click that, it gives you an instruction list of what you have. It has a reform there, has our fee schedule, planning board meeting schedules, everything there, application forms and whatnot. So, you know, they can download that, prep a lot of the stuff and then contact staff. So that may minimize a little bit of the time drain on staff of preparing that and sending that out for the engineering firms that work with us regularly. They would know right where to go, have that information to download and they'd hit the ground running. And then again, this is an usual one is continuing training for our board members. Planning board members are required to get four hours a year trained for that. We continue to send them local seminars, webinars, host events for them, make sure they get their training, make sure they stay up to speed on the current items. We've had even in-house training sessions for them just to make sure they stay current with the latest stuff that's out there. And then item E is similar for staff, keep them up to speed. We've kind of had that same regeneration in the planning department as well. We had some older staff members retire or annual leave, so we've hired some new staff, getting them up to speed, making sure that they're staying current. So getting them to training sessions and making sure they're being properly trained and educated within the field. Leads into personnel. You know, we do have upstairs currently two halftime role positions, both in the planning department and the engineering department for clerks. Those are, you know, the clerks also cover developmental services and communications. Obviously, we're always looking for additional help where necessary, but we understand staffing limits and requirements. And then any expense and funding, we did carry over our budget from 2014. We did have the allocated pain for consultants for the mixed use, so that was a transfer rollover to 2015. We're hoping to conclude that project this year. We have obtained all the GTC funding money so far for the project, so we've been fully backpaid, you know, for all of that, but we do have returnables, you know, at the end of this. Obviously, GTC funded us to make sure we get them a draft manual and a draft ordinance that, you know, can be implemented in other communities and continue to work with GTC to make sure that we're meeting all those goals and requirements that we need to.
Are you planning on looking for an intern for the summer?
In engineering, typically we've had an intern. We've had some resumes. I, you know, need to talk with the supervisor and see if that's something that towns still wants to do, but that's something that has been a great benefit to the engineering department in the past is to utilize their skills, give them some education, but we do get a lot in return from the interns. Any questions on planning goals?
And I would say, Mark, I would encourage you to, you know, continue with the program for engineering for that intern. I'll put that on your list, working with Tracy to get, you know, and certainly my only guidance, you know, has been and continues to be is certainly if there is an engineering student from Penfield, you know, that they might have first consideration. Obviously, if there are none in the program, then, you know, obviously we'll get the best person, but certainly try to lean towards a, you know, Penfield resident student if that's at all possible.
Great.
All right. Great. All right, Mr. Costello?
Thank you, sir.
Two of you guys have had just a quiet and pretty easy day today, huh?
A long day, a little rewarding one, so. First goal is really start focusing around something that we've been working on for the last couple of years. According to Dick Horowitz, we should be closing on the properties and the work hours in the next 30, 60 days to start the process of creating a new public parking lot in that area. We'll be working with Ronnie and with Mark to identify short-term, long-term needs for that area, develop a rehabilitation plan for that area for the board that we can work with and break the banking process. We'll be getting back to you on that as soon as we put that together and start to figure out what needs to be done down there to first make it safe and functional and then, you know, that look at the aesthetics of the area and something to do about that. The second issue is, there's a typo on that, it's the harbor management plan. We, as Tony knows, we've been working diligently on the plan now, the update for the last year and a half, two years. We are coming to conclusion on a draft document that we then have to send off to the health department and the DEC, as they are, they play a major role in that plan. So we're going to have them review the plan, give us some information regarding the plan and insert into it, and then once that's done, give it to you for review and the other town boards and the three towns that I'm up to here in Rockaway for their review to see if we can move forward and set a public hearing for adoption later this year. Continue to work with Mark on the code codification process. He talked a little bit about that. I don't think we need to drag it out any longer, but we'll continue to work with him on that project. We did have an offer for a donation, an installation of a kayak launch at La Salle's Landing Park. Ronnie and I have actually been working on this now for a while. I have spoken to the donator and he's anxious to get going. I do have to obtain a DEC permit. I prepared the permit. I'm going to be sending that in in the next couple of days for their review. I'm assuming there shouldn't be any real problem with it. Once we get the approval, then we'll move forward with the construction company that's offering to put this into the ideal group, and they're pleased to do that. So that'll be a nice addition to that park. I know it's been a dangerous situation for kayakers down there and try and get that resolved for them this year. I am in the process, as you know, we held our public hearing on the LWRP. I'm just really awaiting now the comments from the county planning department. I should have those in the next couple of weeks or so. Once that's done and reviewed, we have to find out if the conservers will do that. If not, we can then move forward and adopt the plan. Still have to prepare the finding statement for that plan, but I'm in the process of doing that now and adopt the finding statements and then adopt the plan after that, and that'll close that process out for the town of Penfield. I am working with the county one, but right now they are moving forward very well. This Carrie Ivers is taking over, she's taking the part herself with that plan in place. I think she'll probably do it or come close to it. My intent really is to apply for the reimbursement of the $60,000 that the state owes us for the work that we do, and I want to get that in this year, get that into our budget. So those are the major ones. There's obviously a lot of little ones that we deal with on a daily basis, but I'm not going to bore you with those. In terms of personnel, obviously there are no additional personnel needs for that department this year. There are no additional expenses or in capital funding anticipated for 2015. Most of our computer needs are basically mirrored by the planning department and working with Mark's group to get that in line. There's no specialized training. If we have any in-house webinar or any local conferences, we'll attend those, but there's nothing expected other than that. And then just basically helping other departments, assisting Mark, assisting Phil Sealy in different projects he's working on, state of the town, supervisors addressed to the PVA, things like that. Been working with Steve Orsini on various projects, including getting sponsorships, that type of thing, for the food truck rally. And I just working with the billing department on co-compliance issues on a daily basis. I did attach some of the highlights of last year. I literally need to go through them tonight, but you're all familiar with the projects and it was actually a very rewarding year. We got a lot of neat things done and hopefully we'll do more this year. That's pretty much it.
Comments for Mr. Costello? Okay. Great. All right, we've got about three minutes before the start of the work session, give folks a chance to get together. I will say to the folks that are in the audience, we always love to have you and you're certainly welcome. The matter is a held item, will not be discussed tonight under our agenda. If you take a look at the agenda, you know, what I had mentioned the last time is, is that if it were, you know, to be an active discussion, if I wasn't that clear, I apologize. But what happens is, is that under the held items, those are items that we're waiting some additional information for. Our town attorney has been doing some late work. I spoke with him as recently as yesterday. And so it's a held item. Like I say, you're welcome, excuse me, I apologize, certainly welcome to stay for our agenda items, but these items that are under held will have no discussion this evening. Okay? All right, we've got about two or three minutes. We'll give, you know, any of those folks an opportunity to hit the restroom or whatever they need to do, and we'll go on with our agenda. So we're going to get started with the, we're going to get started with the agenda. So the January 28th work session is officially called to order at 7:01 PM. We'll let the ministry reflect that all the board members are here as well as some additional staff members. Also indicate that the board at 6:15 got together to review annual goals and objectives, and we did that for highway, engineering, planning, developmental services. And the board over the next couple of Wednesdays will, at work sessions, will then get for the rest of the department. So on the 11th and on the 25th, and so by the end of the month, we'll have all of that done and taken care of. So the meeting is officially called to order. We have the January 14th, 2014 minutes before us and want to entertain a motion of approval for those minutes.
I'll move.
I'll second that.
So move and second any discussion on those minutes. Okay, seeing none, the minutes will stand approved as written. Thank you, Lisa. We do not have any monthly reports to report on. We have no public hearings this evening. We have no guests this evening. That brings us to our action items, law and finance. And tonight we have Ronnie Williams and Rick Geiselman here. This is a follow-up for a report out of the mowing contract that we had for 2014. And then, as the board recalls, we also, we also had, went out for bids for 15 for some other items to be added, you know, to that. So at least one for you. And so with that, Ronnie, Rick, you have the floor. If you want to kind of take us through maybe a kind of a brief, kind of a brief history and then from there, we can, you know, we can go on with any questions that the board might have.
Yes, back in 2013, we were starting to look at the replacement of several pieces of equipment within the grounds, bark side of the business. We were also in a situation where we're starting to lose folks to retirement. So we wanted to take a look to see if there was some opportunities to reduce our operating costs, at the same time continue to deliver the services that the town of Penfield has come to expect. So we requested the, to the board to go out and get quotes. So that occurred in 2013 for the 2014 mowing season. We decided to have everything on the table to see exactly what type of bid packages we would get back in terms of the range of cost. Everything came back. There was a total of seven suppliers that bid on our packages. The lowest range for everything that we did was $82,000 to $122,000 for seasonal mowing. So at that point in time, so if you look at the first page that we put up, it just kind of summarizes what I just got through saying in terms of the suppliers that we touched base with, the actual quotes that came back. We looked at several different areas in terms of mowing frequency. We put in for weekly mowing 20 trips per season to 30 trips per season being our max. For bi-weekly and field mowing, we put in 10 trips per season to 15 trips per season being our max. And therefore, the lowest bid that came in was from Ted Hosmer and company at $82,000 and the highest bid was also, the lowest bid in terms of range was Ted Hosmer from $82,000 to $122,000 based on the number of frequencies in terms of mowing.
And that was so that, so that we have just a clarification. So the, and so I'm just looking at the first page, Ronnie, Ted Hosmer, he was the lowest for all of the mowing.
All of the mowing.
Okay, so this was weekly mowing, bi-weekly and field mowing, which we really have everything broken into those three categories.
Correct.
So the range, the range, as I take a look at that was, again, so that, you know, the record's clear, that 20 trips for weekly, 10 trips for seasonal and two passes for what I'll call the field mowing, he was the lowest bid at $82,000.
Correct.
And the high bid was Cardinal Landscaping at $126,000.
Correct. No, $200, Boone and Son.
Boone and Son, excuse me. Boone and Son 255. Sorry, I went to the bottom line, I shouldn't have gone to the bottom line. So went for 255 for Boone and Son.
Yes.
And then on that, still on that same page, on the second half of the page, you did the 30 trip, the 15 trip and then the two passes. Because the, again, the idea is, is depending upon weather, how wet, how dry may depend. And I think our historic data, which you have down on the corner of that first page is, is that in 2013, weekly, we had 27 mows. So, okay, so I just wanted to, I just wanted to just make sure that that record was straight. I also would just casually make an observation that, that the difference per mow, 20 trips, and the difference per mow, 30 trips, in almost every case, the contractor bid the same. So there wasn't, there wasn't any, in any one of the seven, there was, there was, you know, was this price for 20 and for 30, I'll give it to you for, you know, $20 or $50 or $100 less. It was, it was, and therefore, if we ended up having to go over for some reason, which I don't think historically we've ever gone over 30 mows from a town standpoint, but those additional mows would be at that same unit price.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you for my indulgence on that.
Deals with our actual performance as a town for 2014.
I'm sorry, Ronnie, and so because I bounced you back up, back to the first page, I want to go back to the, to the second page.
Okay.
Which is the low bids by mowing type.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
I didn't give that to everybody, Tom.
Okay, that's, yeah, I've got it, so.
Broken down even further, but still arriving back at that same.
Right, just, okay.
Just the lowest bidders.
Yeah, just, okay, got it, all right. All right, Ronnie, sorry.
Yeah, so the second page deals basically with our cost was for the 27 mows in 2013. Our total costs, all in. Our total costs, all in, maintenance, gasoline, labor, was one hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred and five thousand, one hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred and five, is the actual total expense for 27 trips in 2013. So compare that to the first page in terms of what Hosner was offering with his highest bid of 30 frequencies, one hundred and twenty-one thousand. There is a savings to be had in doing the complete outsourcing of the, the mowing.
Round number is 51,000.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, but, okay. So in 2014, based on the low supplier, lowest bid supplier of the first sheet for biweekly and field mowing, it was not Ted Hosner, it was Rochester Lawn Care, because in those individual pieces, they were lower than Ted Hosner. But overall, if we did everything, Ted Hosner was lower, based on the, the larger weekly type mowing. So biweekly Rochester Land, Lawn Care received the mowing bid for a total of 30 trips for nineteen thousand, three hundred and fifty, and field mowing for a total of two passes, two thousand, five hundred. And their total bid cost was twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and fifty.
So, so, again.
I don't have those numbers.
I apologize. Okay, so.
Twenty thousand, seventy-five.
Yeah, and I have a 10 trip.
Oh, here. Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm reading from the front sheet, so, okay, we're on page three.
Okay, so, so, but I, but I think that the other thing, I just wanna make sure, so your, your front sheet was all of our bidders and what the cost if, if a contractor did everything.
Yeah, if you only chose the lowest contractor to, to complete every job.
Right, right. But by way of, by way of discussion, or to remind all of us of the discussion, this board did not want to do everything, because I think it was our, our collective decision, or, or, you know, we came to a consensus, that even though if we took a look at worst-case scenario, 30 mows, 15 trips for the biweekly, and two field mows at 21,900, 121,900, and even though it was lower than what the town had projected, or had actually done in 2013, this board felt that we needed to walk before we ran, and our other concern was making sure that our athletic fields were in fact properly cut and maintained. So I believe what the board did was, the board said, we wanna leave the weekly mowing piece out, let's go with the biweekly, and then the, the field mow. And so when we did that, Hosmer wasn't the lowest quote on that same front page. Rochester Lawn Care was the lowest for that. And so then, based on that, I, again, I just wanna make sure that we're all on, kind of on that same page. We, we elected to go with Rochester Lawn for a reduced, of what I see you have here in the back, a reduced amount of mowing. We kept a portion, and we contracted a portion out.
Correct.
Because we almost went à la carte. So we kept some, and then we picked from the menu of the lowest prices, making sure that the priorities that we put in place, especially athletic fields, that we maintain control of that.
Correct.
When we went out for the original bid, we told all the suppliers that we reserved the right to cherry pick the price, that we were not gonna necessarily say if you were low for all the total, that we would go with you, we would take the lowest pieces.
Right, so you could have multiple.
Right.
You could have two different companies.
Yep.
Correct.
Which we have done in terms of maintenance before as well.
Yep.
Okay.
So the actuals for Rochester Lawn Care in 2014 was 20,075. That's all in. And that was for a total of 10 trips, 13 trips, I'm sorry. And largely, the reason that, in their bid price at that time, was 15,400, that's what they originally came in, but because of the length of the season in this year, in 2014, well, not this year, but last year, in terms of 2014, it was longer, we were cutting late into October, and there was some additional stuff that we had them do to support our requests. So it came in about $5,000 over what the actual bid was.
So for 2014, DPW were combined with Rochester Lawn Care, did we exceed 27 trips total between the two, as we had done in 2013 as a?
No.
No, no.
So it'd be 13, then, did DPW, they would not have done?
Well, there were, there were 13 trips doing it every other week.
Got it, got it.
Okay.
Biweekly, the biweekly piece.
Twenty-six.
It's apples and oranges, I'm trying to figure.
Yeah, and that, and that's why, you know, as, as we look at this, we've gotta just make sure that, you know, we're looking as, as close to apples to apples. I mean, we're, we're looking at the biweekly field mowing, the contractor did, and then the weekly mowing that we did.
Yep.
And then, and, and as we go along, I'm guessing the, the package will ultimately show us, you know, what the total cost was as we go through. So, so if I may, Ronnie, the, the bid price, the bid price actual cost was 15,400.
Correct.
But because we had the three additional mows, that added three additional biweekly cuts, which, based on their, based on their trip amount, which was the same, that's the difference between 15,400 and the actual cost of 20,075.
Correct.
Okay. So, for 2000, I'm sorry, Rick.
I was just gonna say, you could note on there also that their bid was 12,90 per trip, but they only charged us 12,40 per trip. We did let them know that halfway through the season, and, and they said, not a problem.
Their mistake?
Yeah, so they, they left it at the.
Yep.
Okay. So that, that you have at note, note number three.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yep. Also, we received several positive comments on the mowing completed by Rochester Lawn Care. We however, on the town side, had several non-positive comments about some of the mowing that we were doing, so.
By, by the, the actual DPW's?
By the actual DPW.
Crew?
Crew.
By the change in the town's policy?
No, by the actual DPW.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Especially some of the athletic fields, late in the season, because we're only able to get out, I think it was like once, on several larger fields, we had a lot of thatching with clumping of grass and so forth. So it created some problems.
You know, I guess, I guess I would, I would only say, I would only say to that is, is that, I mean, you're gonna probably get clumping grass from time to time regardless of who's cutting it. Some of it's based on, on weather, you know, conditions and, you know, stuff like that.
Certainly, you're gonna have, in athletic field, someone is going to be more concerned about clumping of the grass, or, you know, than, you know, wild.
Regular parks.
Yeah.
Well, and there, I mean, there was a time last year where, you know, between humidity and rain, that you really had to go out there and mow twice a week.
Yeah.
In order to stay, if you were doing it once a week, by the time you got back to it again, it was.
Pretty tough.
It was pretty tough.
All right, so, all right.
That was one of the advantages with Rochester Lawn Care, is they work a six-day week. So they were able to keep ahead of it a lot better than we could, because we were only working the four tens.
Four tens.
We lost three days every week, so what you mowed on Wednesday, you couldn't get back to for, you know, at the least, five days.
Right, okay.
That's a good point.
That is a good point. All right, and then.
So the last two pages basically deals with how we broke out the individual properties, the acreage, and who's actually mowing. The top half basically was the weekly for DPW in 2014. The lower half is Rochester Lawn Care. Total acreage for Rochester Lawn Care was 81.93 acres, and the total acreage for DPW was 132.597. Okay.
All right.
In 2014.
All right, so for the, for the 20, 20, 20,075, everything, basically, 18, 18 through 47, 18 through 47, all those properties, for that 81.93 acres, was cut by Rochester Lawn Care.
Correct.
Okay, all right.
And as a side note, Rochester Lawn Care is a Penfield company.
Yes, yes, it's a residential company.
They've been great to work with.
Okay.
Very responsive.
Okay, Ronnie, real, real quickly, on, on page two, I'm noticing a number that just kind of sticks out to me, and tell me if I'm correct, and then, am I correct that at one time, when we had town staff cutting the lawns, we had employees that were making almost $90,000 a year cutting lawns? Is that correct?
We had some very high-paid employees.
Well, you know, I get, as I look at the hour, so you're just taking the hourly rate and, and taking that out for a full year?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Absolutely. I'm not saying they're cutting lawns year-round, but regardless of they're cutting lawns, or doing electrical work, or cleaning bathrooms, their salary is $90,000 a year.
Or probably more, more accurate is to go with the hourly rate.
Right.
And saying, breaking their salary down to an hour, to an hourly rate, this is how much you are paying a person to sit on, who's skilled to do many other things.
Right.
Correct.
To sit on a mower, while other projects may be sitting and waiting.
And that was the advantage of contracting parties this out, is we were able to repurpose some of those folks to do some project work and some other things.
Including projects that they would prefer to be doing, from my understanding.
Yeah.
So just, this might be a good place, so I just, to give, to give you an update. So we had a breakdown, obviously, of full-time employees, and what the rate, what the average hourly rate is, and then seasonal, what that rate was. But what, what happened is that we had one individual that retired, that individual, to our good, to our good fortune, he left employment with the town at the higher rate, but he, for the last two seasons, has elected to come back and cut grass at a seasonal rate. And so that is one of our seasonals. We had our mechanic who, from time to time, would help and support, Bruce Dayton, he's been moved, you know, into the garage full-time, as we collapsed DPW, you know, into all the groups. So he's, he's doing light vehicles, and then all the mowers, and all the tractors, and things like that, what I'll call the small, the small engine repair. We've got TJ, who was cutting grass, has now moved into the sewers, and he's one of our elite people on the, on our new VAC truck, so he's, he's doing that. Dave Keier, who I think is one of our, one of our top, top folks, are utilizing him more on DPW projects, and running what I'll call equipment for drainage projects and, and other work that we're, that are utilizing him. And then we have Tim Asterton, and Tim is probably our person that, you know, regular full-time person that spends more of his time out, but we've also freed him up to do more work within parks projects, and less time on the mowing. So that's how, how things have shaken out with folks that have been cutting. And then we were able also to reduce the number of our seasonal people to cut grass than what we had before. So that's how the, that's how the employee lineup has, has changed, has changed.
There's a couple important footnotes to that then as well, that we talked about in various times during work sessions, in terms of expanding the existing skill set of an employee. As we have employees retire, as we have, you know, other projects that, you know, come to, come to the top of the to-do list, we can utilize our own employees, expand their skill sets, so that when we do have seasoned people retire, we've got somebody there to fill that. The other side that we have discussed, and not to get too off on a tangent, but with respect to healthcare, you know, certainly with the Affordable Care Act coming into play, we had several discussions regarding seasonal employees who now could potentially fall very quickly under being qualified for full-time benefits.
Correct.
At a significant cost to the town. So to, to, to say we have a reduction in seasonal employees, that has a ripple effect financially, beyond being able to maintain our own workforce within, and, and expand the skill sets of our current employees.
Yes, absolutely.
So, so Ronnie, I do have a question for you. The numbers on page two, this is my.
Page two?
Yes. Those are 2013 operations, $2,400 hours, you're talking about?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so, so we know what Rochester Lawn Care's cost was for 2014. Do you have a ballpark number on what the DPW's costs were for 2014, if you take out these particular mows?
Why aren't we looking at two-four?
Because we know what, to 2013 was 173,000.
Correct.
Okay, and 2014, we know 20,000 was taken out, so is DPW's cost then 153,000, or is it actually less than that?
Rob, I don't have that number with me.
Okay.
I can get it, but I don't have that.
So Linda's question is, how come we didn't use 2014? The reason we used 2013 is because 2014 was the first time that we had a mix of contractor and town. So the best, the best cost that we had for everything, for the full 214 acres that we cut, excuse me, that we cut, was 2013. So we're using 2013 data. I think in the 2015 packet, Rick's got what it cost us in, so as we.
I don't have that yet.
Yeah, we haven't gotten.
Okay, because I'm curious to know if, if the savings was just a, you know, a face value of 50, or, I'm sorry, $20,075, or if the cost to DPW actually was reduced down to like 130, 120, so.
And I think, and I think, I think we can kind of, I think, as we continue.
Well, I need chapter two.
Yep, so let me, let me, let me tee up, let me tee up chapter two, because I want you, because I was the person responsible for this. What I, what I asked, what I asked Ronnie and Rick to do was, so in 2014, we had a break, the top 17, 1 through 17A, we did, and 18 through 30, or 47, the contractor did. What I asked Rick and Ronnie to do was to take a look at that 1 through 17A, and make a recommendation as to who should, based on our experience that we had for 2014, make a recommendation as to what we should still continue to cut versus what we might ask the contractor to expand to. So Ronnie and Rick went out and, and went out for quotes, and so I'll let them pick up, I'll let them pick up for that, based on the quotes that came in on the 14th of January, if I recall my numbers correctly.
Yep, as Tony was reading, we did go off the bids. There were a total of.
Suppliers?
Yeah. Eight suppliers, one rejected because of incomplete bid information. The lowest, and the good part about this whole thing is that the suppliers were very close in terms of cost for both the weekly mowing piece and biweekly mowing piece, only like $10, $100 in difference between the, between the top four. So the list that you see in front of you, the lowest supplier was Curb Solution at 835 for weekly mowing for 20 trips, and. eight-thirty-five for weekly mowing for twenty trips, and one-fifty-five for bi-weekly mowing for ten trips. The second supplier, Rochester Lawn Care, and I'm saying that because on the second page, you'll see some changes here, Rochester Lawn Care was the same, eight-thirty-five for weekly mowing, and they're the company that we currently have contracted with, and their bi-weekly mowing was one-sixty-five, so we're there roughly about ten dollars more on the bi-weekly for ten trips. If we go to the high end of that and say we're going to do thirty trips, again, their base price was eight-thirty-five, and the difference, again, is ten dollars between Curb Solution and Rochester Lawn for one-fifty-five to one-sixty-five. Okay? So if you flip the page to the second part of that bid process, we asked for hourly rates so that we can see exactly if we had to do single cuts or double cuts, where the difference would be.
Ronnie, I'm sorry to cut you off, I'm just, I'm looking at the 2014 numbers for, I'm just going to take Rochester Lawn Care, where it says, weekly mowing per pass, and it says forty-one sixty?
Different, it was a different bid package, Rob, so it's a different area.
You know where I'm going with my question then?
Yeah, they're not going to match up.
All right.
Two different...
It's a pretty stark difference between, okay.
Yeah, two totally separate pieces of property that we bid.
And if you recall, when we bid originally, we bid it for up to three years. So if we keep and just cut everything we did last year, you know, we can do that for fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, our choice. The reason for the new bid was, again, for those areas that we were cutting, but also then based on a recommendation that came back from DPW as to what should be cut by contractor versus what should be cut by the town. And Ronnie and Rick, and I had this conversation with them prior to the bid going out, they wanted to respect the board's position about sensitivity around weekly cuts for the major sports complexes. And so when they bid it, they bid it to get the price, what it would cost to do it, but if you take a look, and I don't want to get ahead of Rick and Ronnie, but if you take a look, their recommendation, their recommendation for what was going to be cut...
With the blueprint, with the blueprint on it?
Yeah, this, this...
What they, what they said is, is that those red weekly cuts would be DPW, those are our major recreation facilities, and so they wanted to at least respect what this board's position was last year. And so the, you know, so that's why we had broken that out a little bit differently, or they broke it out a little bit differently.
Yeah, so the only, the only large areas that we went out, did for, was Channing Philbrick Park, that's only four-point-seven-five acres, and we did Greenwood Park, and that's the reason for the hourly rates that you see, that Ronnie was talking about, for the single-deck and multi-deck mower, knowing that at Greenwood we have lacrosse that goes on there. We wanted to be able to double-cut the lacrosse fields on a weekly basis, so we used those over those hourly rates to calculate what we felt it would cost us to do that extra cutting. And when you factor in those hourly rates compared between Rochester Lawn Care and Curb Solutions, Rochester Lawn Care then comes out to be the better, the better deal for the town. Their hourly rates were significantly less, and so using the hours that we put against the factor, and then their regular rates, you'll see that Curb Solutions was thirty-one thousand and Rochester Lawn Care was thirty thousand fifty.
What, I guess, what was the rationale for removing Channing Philbrick or Greenwood Park, Greenwood in particular, I mean, it's one of the larger community-oriented parks we have, and they do have athletic events on a regular basis. So what is the rationale for bidding that one out but not keeping our DPW guys?
That was me.
That was you?
And I'll tell you what the rationale was.
Thank you.
Not a problem. What I said is, what I have consistently said is, is that a lot of people know how to cut grass, and while we were being sensitive to our major fields for athletics, I wanted to see, you know, again, put it out there, that if the board had the appetite to try one of the small fields, to see what that quality difference would be, whether the town cut it or whether a contractor cut it. And so they didn't, they didn't just go out, you know, that was kind of an item that I pushed, because you don't know, you know, what you don't know.
It's an additional experiment within the experiment.
Exactly. And if the board, you know, certainly if the board, and hence why we're taking a look at this, whether we, whether we continue on and do just what we did last year, or if we want to expand it, or if we feel that, you know, we want to even do something different than that, we could. But that was my recommendation to the group to do that as a, as an experiment within the experiment. So I want to make sure that, if any daggers come my way.
He seemed happy to defer to you on that one.
He did.
The blueprinted weekly bids, like, for instance, let's take Greenwood Park, would that fall under the category you mentioned earlier in terms of a company having a six-day work week?
Correct.
Greenwood, because those are little guys playing lacrosse, and I think the grass gets up to their knees very quickly.
Yep.
That that would be an option, that maybe that's a logical next step that supervisor has proposed, because that could be potentially a place, given the drainage in the area...
We could mow it on Monday and turn around and mow it again on Friday.
That particular area, and, yeah, and that there's a playground there, and, all right.
Yeah, and with the option of having the hourly rate, we can mow it more than twice a week if we chose to do it three times a week, depending on, you know, growth of grass. So those are things that we monitor continuously as we go around and look at the field.
Do you set height, heights of blades when you mow?
Yeah, in our specs, it tells them what we wanted to mow away, yeah.
Yep, yeah.
And then I assume then that nothing precludes the DPW from any event, the circumstances are such that something that has been contracted out and needs a cut, you can...
We can do it, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, it's not off-limits, so to speak, type of thing.
Yeah, they don't own it, it's still town property, and we still make the call on when they're going to do it and whatnot.
Correct.
Okay. In particular reference to seventeen A, which is the Pennacott acreage?
Yep.
I know that earlier in the year, last season, that start is a monthly?
That started out originally as a no-mow.
No-mow, okay.
It was an area where we said, we didn't see any value in us mowing that any longer, so we stopped. It didn't take long before the neighbors, you know, reacted.
Right.
It probably took us, Rob, close to a month to get in there and get it all cleaned up. We had to mow it, mow it, mow it. Once we got that down to a reasonable level, then we went on to a, once every other week schedule. So our feeling is, we should be fine this year on that bi-weekly mow without any problem.
And last year, that, the bi-weekly, when we did shift back, it was done by DPW?
Yes.
So this year it would be to bid out?
Yes, yep.
I think Rob is asking it particularly because he went out there and developed quite a relationship with that neighborhood.
I did, and I walked.
We understood the sensitivity, for sure.
Certainly, we got the feedback regarding Rob's energy in that regard.
Until they told me there were snakes in the grass, and then I ran. But I did, I did go out and spoke with the Oaks and the La Coguitas and some other residents over there, so their concern was not necessarily who did the mowing, it was the frequency. So I appreciate that this year it looks as if we're going to maintain the bi-weekly, which I think that they will be fine, good, so.
Because we know who they're going to call.
Right, absolutely.
Well, and that piece of property over there, maybe at some point in time in the future, we look to see if the residents have any interest in purchasing.
That is correct.
Because it does a butt to their backyards, and, you know, I realize there may be some easement issues through that property, but, you know, it may just be worth reaching out and seeing if that's an avenue they want to pursue.
I did bring that up, it's a good point, Andy, I did bring that up at the time. I don't think that they were aware that that was even an option, so the way that was left is, as we moved into the winter, I was going to speak with Ann and then get back with the residents and see if there were some feasible numbers.
I think there was five or six residents who did mow a lot of our grass to begin with. They wanted to keep it shorter than what we were doing.
It's just an extension of their yard in a certain area of that, so they may be interested in purchasing that property, making a permanent extension of their...
Not only just volunteer to maintain it, so to speak, off and on, but to be able to do something, whatever they'd like.
Sure.
Is there a number of the no-mow, the land that we own that we have maintained that we're not maintaining now?
We don't have many that's a no-mow.
No.
Well, I'm just saying, because, you know, this one, the Pennacott, was one, and then it got back on because there was such an interest by the residents.
I think the only, I think the only other one, Linda, but I think we kind of evolved even before we got into this, there is an area that is behind the bus garage, kind of south of Gebhardt, kind of north, northwest of Liberty Street, depending upon where you're standing on Liberty Street, or north, northeast of, on Liberty Street, there's an area back there, and we were doing very selective cutting of that in the past. We weren't doing it at weekly or bi-weekly, we might go a couple of years and then, depending upon what was there. We were doing it more from a, what I'll call a maintenance, if you will, because similar to what we're doing for Commission Dish, if you just let it go, and you get a lot of those suckers that come up and they start to take over. So I think, I think at the time, Bob Angers' group was going in on some regularity, but it wasn't, and so we, we're not, that's another piece that we own that we're not, that we're not cutting.
Well, obviously, like Beacon Hill.
Beacon Hill, I think they went to...
That's field mow.
They went to the, that was a field mow.
No, it was always field mow.
It was going to be only twice a year, we went back and did that once a month at requested the residents, so we switched back then.
Which worked out fine, because we were able to keep it down.
And the property at South Village Landing, you know, over in Coventry Manor, there's...
That was true.
Monica told us about the deer area, she was afraid her dogs were going to get ticks. There was some land back there by South Village Trail that had been mowed and wasn't being mowed.
Could be that one little piece back there, I'm not 100% sure.
It would be Coventry One or Coventry Two, probably Coventry Two.
Yeah, I mean, we're still, we're still cutting it.
Places we had heard about.
I mean, we're still cutting it, but it's, it's, so Coventry One, Coventry Two is...
Bring the book with me, but I think there was a Coventry Three.
Three, exactly.
And that's the one we said no-mow on, and we did not mow that last year, and we got no feedback.
It's got to be a really small piece of land.
It's not a very big, it's not a very big piece.
So the dynamics, the dynamics that I think we're going to, we're going to hear isn't necessarily as much about the, you know, grass cutting or regularity of grass cutting. I mean, if we, if we were to stay the, even if we were to stay as we did for 2014, the town does this, contractor does that, it ends up being more of an item around the deer ticks that I think we heard from, you know, Ed Linsco at our town board meeting, that there is more concern about deer ticks in general across, you know, all areas, and so that's, that's an issue, but, I mean, if I take a look at, you know, in my backyard and along the creek and the overgrowing and what have you, and the amount of deer that are back there, I mean, we're certainly not going to, you can't get back there to mow just based on the contours and what have you. But I think that deer tick issue is going to be an issue that I think all of us are going to experience in some way, shape, or form.
Well, and they're not just carried by deer, our coyote population, they have that same tick on them. Our ACO Steve has talked to quite a few people who have been complaining about the coyotes that are coming into their backyard, they're mowing their grass normally, but the coyotes come into the backyard at night, they howl, they roll around in the grass, then you let your dog out, and your dog gets ticks on them from transport from the coyotes, so it's, ticks are a concern, hard to manage.
So now I'm envisioning a monthly heartworm, a monthly flea and tick, and then a monthly deer tick.
Big K-9 farmer.
Okay.
Took care of that.
Thank you.
And that last piece you talked about by the bus farm, we put that on the roadside mowing?
Oh, you put that on the roadside mowing?
Yeah, so Dave mows that.
Okay, so that...
He goes two or three passes through the town, he goes in there with that rough mower and mows it.
Got it, hence why it's not on the list, because it's considered roadside mowing, got it. And that's another, that's another, just an example or reminder to the board, the person that's doing our roadside mowing is the same person that has done our roadside mowing. The difference is, is that he was a regular full-time employee. Davy, and Davy elected to retire, but Davy asked to come back as a seasonal, to do roadside mowing, and that was a logical recommendation backed from Ronnie and Rick, because didn't have to train anybody, he knew it, he knew the equipment, and the difference is, is that we're not paying him his hourly schedule and benefits, we're paying him the seasonal rate.
And he loves it.
Yeah.
Yeah, he does.
He's in that tractor forty hours a week and...
Fish fry money.
What do we, what do you believe is an estimated savings for 2015?
If we use the 2013 number, one-seventy-three, we got roughly about a hundred thousand, that would be town costs in 2015, and roughly about fifty thousand that will be contracted costs. And that's the two, that's the new pieces that we picked up, as well as the pieces we did in 2014.
A hundred and seventy-three thousand projected.
Right, that's just a base number that we're using.
Based on history.
Right, that's what we did for a hundred and seventy-three.
All right, and then, I'm sorry, Ron, I was writing this down, you think if we win...
Yeah, roughly about fifty thousand for the contracted piece of it.
At the high end.
Yeah, at the high end, if we have, you know...
So about a twenty-three, twenty-four thousand dollar savings?
Right, yeah. But it also, you know, that's one side of looking at it, but the other side is, we've been able to utilize other folks to do things to fill some gaps.
Productivity, knocking, I think if we, as we've seen, maybe I've taken a closer look at, especially in the drainage area for worship management, productivity and knocking some of those projects up quicker.
Correct.
And that's, I mean, that's, I have seen that on numerous occasions throughout the year.
Well, another good example is Tops Plaza. We utilized Dave Keier and one of the highway guys to actually install that boat ramp piece. So, you know, taking people and putting them in a more high-skilled role and utilizing their skills to help us get some of those projects done a lot faster, so.
And certainly that's our goal, you know, especially around some of these, what I'll call these neighborhood drainage areas that pop up, if we can jump on those to minimize some of our, some of our problems. You know, so, I mean, and I'm only just doing this more, you know, just for a, for kind of a more recap than anything else, but if we went full contract, again, based on, based on the low bid, you know, of eighty-two thousand as compared to our hundred and seventy-three, we'd have a, you know, even more of a savings. You know, we've elected to, you know, keep a piece in-house, and, you know, certainly I was, you know, supportive of that, to do that. I still think that, you know, contractor, given the proper specs, can have the same results, but I, again, I think having a track record and demonstration, I think, is good. And being able to, you know, reduce our overall cost by approximately twenty-three thousand, and, you know, I, you know, certainly would recommend to the board, based on conversations that I've had with Ronnie and Rick, is to expand what we do for the contractor, and including, and I, so I just want to highlight it... including Greenwood unless the board would like to pull the Greenwood piece out. But would recommend that we, that we add to that mowing and again, you know, come back and evaluate, you know, what those, what those costs are. And we do, you know, by way of full disclosure, we do have to, you know, because we do have a piece that we're keeping in-house, we do have to go out and buy a hundred thousand dollar piece of mowing equipment. Because I, I asked Rick and Ronnie, but more importantly, I asked Bruce Staden, you know, can we get one more year out of it? And would they just, I mean, they rode that, they rode that horse, they rode that horse as far as they could ride.
The horse is broken.
It's a good bullet point though, because we're talking about savings to the town. I mean, there's so many variables. It's not just a dollar amount of, of projected. We talked about drainage projects coming off the to-do list quicker.
Correct.
People being able to expand their skill set. We haven't lost one employee due to the contracting out of the mowing.
Correct.
Correct.
So, we've got, we certainly have plenty of work for all of our guys to do every hour of their week.
Correct.
And also then, we mentioned earlier in your priorities and goals meeting, expanding revenue and enabling that during the, during the mowing season, our skilled employees can go and, and we're seeing MCC wanting to use us more. And that, that increases the revenue for the, the fund within the Department of Public Works.
Yeah.
So, it's, I think it's, I think there's a lot of different variables that, that you could measure beyond simply the cost to, of an employee sitting on a mower.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, I guess.
Would we have to, so I guess what you're saying is that we're looking at also the purchase of the, the mower. So, whatever we.
Yeah, but I think we've gotta do that anyways. We always need a quality mower. I kind of put that under, it's, it's gonna happen.
And we put it off.
We band-aided it. I mean, we, it, it costs us a little bit more in, in maintenance.
Well, how many years are we, that would be a long-term commitment then to continuing to mow our athletic fields. I mean, because.
Or any other field that we need.
It's a multi-purpose mower. I was going to say the factor too, in my opinion.
Well, so, so to answer the question, I think you're going. Typically, and you guys are the experts, you tell me. The make, the mechanic will tell me something different. The mechanic will say that typically, ideally, every five or six years, ideally, I think this one, we had either seven or eight years, nine years.
Nine years.
So, typi- typically it's that five to seven range, Rob?
So, let me, let me ask my question a different way, or maybe get to my, my question or point a different way. If, if we were to purchase the 100,000 dollar mower.
Right.
Correct.
And in two years decide to take DPW off of all mowing of the town, do we still have the ability to recoup the value of it? Okay. I just, I don't wanna purchase a vehicle and then two years make it obsolete.
Especially when we buy it on state bid.
Okay.
Right.
It, it's significantly lower in cost. I think the, the retail value of the one mower we're looking at is like 121. I think our price is 91.
Okay.
You could turn around and sell it next year for more than what we paid for it.
That was my concern. I just don't wanna buy something and make it obsolete, buy something.
That's a great, that's a great. And, and then, and then the other thing, I mean.
Probably against the law. I don't know.
Why can't I switch from snowpot to right now?
It's on the revenue stream.
I'm always looking for it.
So, the other thing is, is that we can, even though it is a nine-year-old piece of equipment, we'll still get something for it when we take it to Teetsworth.
Yes, we will.
It could be 2,500 bucks. It could be five grand. It could be, I, I mean, we've been fortunate with, through Teetsworth, which is, you know, municipal, you know, typically a lot of people like to come by municipal, um, equipment because typically municipalities will take care of their equipment. I mean, the oil gets changed regularly and it gets repaired and, you know, versus a contractor that if it runs, why, why, why do I screw around with it? If it breaks down, I just need to get it running again as quickly and as cheaply as we can. And so municipalities, you know, trucks, pickup trucks, big trucks, graders, all those things tend to fetch a, a reasonable. So, the delta between the 91 and whatever we get, so we might be, we might be in the area of, you know, the 80s or thereabouts. Everybody comfortable with explanation on 2014 summary?
It looks as if we could save more money though. When you say 50,000, what are you, how are you basing that? Cause I.
Was the 50s the total of what we would renew with Rochester Lawn Care for the piece they did last year plus the 30 for the piece they're gonna do this year? So, they're two separate contracts.
Right. I was looking at the 30 and, and that was just for the new stuff.
The new stuff, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And we blocked them.
And everybody, and everybody, and everybody is okay with a trial at Greenwood Park? Okay. All right.
And I mean, you know, if we were gonna try that with somebody, these are the guys to do it with. They, last year, on some of the stuff that they were doing bi-weekly for us, if they didn't like the way it looked when they were done, they mowed it again while they were there at their own price.
They are literally within walk distance of Greenwood Park.
Yeah. I mean, they're, it's a good aggressive young company and the guys really care and they really wanna do business in the town. So.
Well, and I suspect that you'll have somebody go and monitor at the first couple of times.
Oh, yeah.
Sure.
Okay, I'm okay with that.
All right. Okay. Any other discussion on the board or for Rick or Ronnie?
So, the next step is to put in a resolution to move forward to accept the bid.
For just the new, just the new piece or for the, for that area that is, you know, highlighted in the, in the blue, in the, in the blue area.
Correct.
You know, and then the five areas or round numbers, you know, so, so we, we will cut round numbers 100 acres and the contractor around numbers will cut 114 acres, round numbers. All right. Thank you, Ronnie. Thank you, Rick. You're always welcome to, to stay, but not, obviously not required to stay. All right. We'll move on to our, we'll move on to our next item, which is our planning application fees for 2015. Thanks, Ronnie. Rick, thank you. Mr. Valentine has, is up for that, for that discussion.
There's a sheet going around the room that shows an updated proposed fee and a current fee. This was something.
Well, I take two dollars.
Come on, Paul.
Oh, we have two. Is it two, two per week?
There's just two sheets.
Oh, two sheets. Okay.
Stapled in the bottom corner. I don't know why.
Is that an engineer, is that what engineers do, staple it?
That's what the copier gave me today.
Okay, got it, got it.
Take what the copier gives us.
Your hat. So, we met with the board end of December, talked about assessing our fees, making sure we're covering our costs for what is brought before us, make sure the developer is covering his fees and, and costs that he's incurring upon the town. So, after the last meeting, we shared those breakdown of what we're spending between postage, between cost of postcards, putting this sign on the property, putting in the paper. I don't have that information right here tonight, but the back page basically shows the same similar costs that you were looking at and we assessed all other towns, villages within Monro County to kind of assess what they're doing as well. So, the, the top sheet basically shows what we're currently charging on the left-hand side for admin reviews, planning board sketch, planning board preliminary final, town board sketch, and town board preliminary final, both residential and commercial. On the left column shows what our planning application fee is and what our engineering review fee is on the right. So, the right-hand column shows the proposed amount. We've tried to be sensitive and I know this board has always been sensitive to anybody that wants to come in for a sketch plan, not incurring a lot of costs. We're not charging an engineering review fee because we're not getting a detailed review, but making sure we're covering our costs, at least for applications. Make sure for advertising, we're getting those, those covered, but, you know, keeping the costs, you know, lower on those. If somebody kinda wants to run up the flagpole, what if they're not incurring a huge cost. But then as we get into preliminary final, both for the, the planning board and the town board, that, you know, we are covering some of our review costs. And then, you know, showing a, an increase in those that I think are comparable to what other communities are charging, you know, more towards, I think we're, we'd still be in the, the lower to the average end of that. And then a, a little bit of a bump in the engineering review fee costs as well. Just make sure we update that and make sure we cover our lot fees, our per lot cost and, and the per thousand acre costs, you know, that we incur with reviews as well. So, this was kind of a recommendation. We ran by, you know, PRC. I think they were, were comfortable with, with that. We did add a little caveat at the bottom, you know, we do, you know, ask for separate checks. Also, re-advertising fee, that's something we've never stated before that, you know, we have some applications come, they do a sketch plan hearing, go back, wanna come back for another sketch plan hearing, you know, again, to make sure we're recouping our costs.
Change their idea.
Change their idea totally, you know, come back once again that, you know, that again, that applicant is incurring that cost to, to re-advertise and it's not borne by the, the residents of the town.
Do you know up here how long it's been since these fees have been updated?
I think it was 2008-ish, the last looked at it. I don't know.
The first time you brought it up, just with several years.
What they were changed or how much they were, they were changed back then, or if they were, if that was just the last time it was taken a look at. Most of our, our things, we started looking at it in 10, 11, 12, 13, looking at some of those costs. But, you know, this was one of our goals this year was to make sure that we, you know, assessed our fees and make sure we're appropriately, you know, covering our costs and that, you know, the residents of the community aren't, you know, incurring the cost or.
Seems to be split amongst municipalities regarding the engineering fees. Is it just kind of half and half?
Everybody charges them, but some have on-staff engineers and some do not. So, there are caveats that others just basically, it's a, it's a direct outside charge.
Outside, okay.
So, they would, whatever the outside charge fee is, you know, if they don't have an on-staff one, a lot of these ones do that we've listed here. Some of the communities, they just send out to a firms whatever cost they incur. I think they even charge a, you know, a, a fee on top of that just to make sure that, you know, they cover any costs of, you know, billing and whatever, but they, they just directly send that out. So, that's some of the difference between having an on-staff engineering department to do it versus just a direct bill.
The, the towns that do charge for rezoning costs, do those towns have incentive zoning laws or is this sort of on top of an incentive result?
I don't think they're allowed to do that personally. We've looked into this over the years. We've not come up with any place where we're allowed to do it.
Well, we already sort of do it with the incentive.
Well, that's.
That's what I'm saying. So, I'm just trying to figure out.
Reszonings are a different issue.
A straight rezoning.
The things you're talking about, that would be like a double billing, so to speak.
So, yeah, we didn't, when we don't show anything for a rezoning.
Well, we, cause we already have a different concept.
And through incentive zoning, there's, there's a different option or different.
But we still use rezoning.
To that.
It doesn't have to be incentive.
No, no, no. I mean, I was talking about incentive zoning, but the rezoning's still on the books.
We do charge for incentive zoning. We do charge advertising fees.
And then as a separate, you're, what you're saying, I think, is that is also there still is a fee if it's non-incentive zoning for rezoning application.
No.
Not even for advertising?
We've never charged for, for advertising, we do.
Yeah, okay.
But we don't charge any fees for the actual act of rezoning.
So, maybe, for example, one of these towns, you know, when we zoned across from Wegmans, they would actually incur a cost then? Hypothetically, those, those residents would not only petition the town, go along with the counter plan.
We can look further. Maybe that's.
No, no, I, I'm just trying to understand.
Maybe that's what they call it.
You're saying if we had it, if we had that.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out.
Why wouldn't we? What's your logic that we wouldn't have a fee?
I am not sure you're allowed to have a fee for rezoning.
But if an applicant comes there, gonna make something of their property different than what it's zoned.
Well, the other part of that too is in many cases, the town administrated a rezoned property.
And which we did. And that's why I don't know if it's different.
But other times, it's like, I don't know.
If somebody comes to us and asks for a rezoning, we have to advertise what we do charge them for that purpose. We don't charge them any engineering review fee.
And, and I don't think we, and I don't think we should because, because at that, at that point, you know, we have to, we have to decide, you know, is it gonna go from residential to commercial or from multiple residents to commercial? I mean, we're just doing the use.
But the advertising and everything.
But the advertising, we do charge.
Yeah, as a cost.
You know, we, we talked about this a couple of months ago preliminarily when you brought it up. And, you know, I, I, I think the proposed fees are fair. You know, I think they're within reason, even, you know, still a little bit less expensive than some of the other towns. You know, and if a developer or builder or whoever comes before the town and wants to do something special and it requires the town to expend monies for advertising for public notices, then that developer, builder, whoever it is, whatever entity should be responsible for covering those fees. And so, I, I support this. I'm, I, I'm fine moving ahead with it.
Very well said. I agree.
Okay. Please go to that. All right. Mark, uh, resolution in for, for Friday. Will that work? We'll have it on the agenda for next Wednesday? Thank you, board. Okay. Great, great. That brings us down through our items. I would, I would like to just, and I know this is not typically a norm, but we do, we do have one new business item that I know that has generated certainly a lot of interest within our community and it involves a, a reg, a registered sex offender level three. And I just wanted to, to share with the board, we did receive some input from the sheriff's department and the sheriff's department has been staying very close to this particular item. And so, this involves a, an individual that was listed at living at 3090 Atlantic Avenue, across the street from the town hall. The sheriff's department has indicated that for the last two nights, the individual has not been in Penfield, but has been in another community. They're working with the Department of Social, Social Services to get him placed at another location outside of the town. He is temporarily staying at the Francis House on Joseph Avenue until he's placed in a new residence and that the sheriff's department will continue to keep us posted. My understanding of the law is that once a new permanent residence is established, that, you know, we'll have to re-register. So, certainly I, I wanna make sure that we still keep this in, in front of us. But it appears as though they're working to have this person located outside of the town of Penfield.
Right. And Tony, I just agree. And I wanna thank you sincerely for spearheading. I believe you've been the one spearheading this from the moment that this town board first heard about this particular case. And working with the sheriff's department, I think that it appears that we may be moving forward to a positive resolution for the residents of Penfield. I, I think that by any outward appearance, this is a failure at the top of our criminal justice system where a convicted sex offender can be arrested, held awaiting extradition, released in a community in a state 3,000 miles away and reside near a community park. You know, this particular failure put Penfield residents, particularly children, at risk.
Absolutely.
And, you know, in Pen, if Penfield has to lead on this, then I think that we should. So, I explore, or I propose that we explore any and all legislative remedies to, that are at our disposal. I will continue my work from the last couple of days and hopefully we'll have a draft proposal prepared to be on our agenda for Wednesday, not only to rectify this in the future, but to assure residents that their safety continues to be our number one priority. So, my proposal is to look at any legislative remedies that are available to us and quickly and have something available for Wednesday.
Okay. And, you know, I know that, you know, certainly, you know, several members of this board have, have done a lot of research, in particular yourself and Councilwoman Metzler has been doing. And I, you know, certainly appreciate that. I've been keeping our town attorney updated and, and I think if we move in that direction of drafting something up for Wednesday evening. uh, if we move in that direction of drafting something up, uh, for, uh, Wednesday evening, I think that's an important first step, uh, to go through and to do that. So I appreciate the, the effort by you and Councilwoman Metzler on that. So, uh, let's, uh, let's move in that direction, as I hear anything more. Certainly, the, the next, um, announcement that comes out, um, from, uh, the Justice Department identifying where that new address is, and, and as, as a, uh, red, a level-three offender, uh, that address can be posted. So we will hopefully, uh, in, in, over the next week or less, that we might find out. I, I do understand the law says 10 days, if I'm not, not mistaken.
To register and change the address.
Paul might, uh, be a little bit more, uh, you know, uh, familiar with that from her, her research, but has 10 days, and, uh, I'm hoping it is something less than that, that person is, uh, then formally out of, uh, out of Penfield, but all indications are that now temporarily, temporarily staying at the Francis House. So, um, I think that, that, I, I don't think we should certainly let our guard, guard down. I think what you're proposing is excellent, um, and until we get a total final resolve on this.
Unfortunately, I agree with the Councilman, and it's certainly exposed a void that, um, we need to rectify in whatever way we can, in whatever authority we have as a, a local municipality to control, um, you know, residency and public safety concerns.
Okay, all right. Uh, thank you for everyone that has, uh, supported that, and, uh, certainly, uh, a very unfortunate situation, and, uh, one that, uh, will help us, uh, maybe put another, uh, level or layer of, uh, support or protection into the town of Penfield, so, okay.
Thank you.
All right, uh, seeing no further business, uh, come before the board. Uh, the board will stand adjourned, uh, at 8:12 PM. Thank you, Board.